I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Preston County Commission. Today is November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all three Commissioners are present. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Stone. Do we have anyone from the public to be recognized that is not on the agenda? Take a review of this.
At this time, I'm due to pay the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed.
No, second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to pay the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. We have nothing from our assessor's office this morning, not today. Nothing under appropriations or tax corrections. And then also, we will go ahead with our nine thirty-one appointment right on time with Mullins and Mullins. So we'll be on that. Good morning, Hunter.
Good morning, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good. I just wanted to give you an update. I don't have a check with me today, but it's in the mail.
Well, it should be forthcoming pretty soon from what my understanding is because they had, oh gosh, what was his name, the chairman of the first foundation announced that last week. And they've already said you better have a check account set up because we can resend it to you. So we should.
And it will come directly into the account.
That's right, yeah. And originally it's supposed to, John Jenkins has been working with him, he's the account administrator, the CPA that runs the account. And originally it's supposed to get in November, but the calculations are a little bit complicated because there's different percentages for what is distributor money and what was non-distributor because capital running to the top part of the distributor. So that gives us a little bit more in that pocket, if you will. So basically, to make a long story short, it's now, John is telling me in December, you're supposed to receive a check in December, has to be put into a separate account. Let us know when you receive it, if any questions about the account, and we'll assist you with that. And of course, the question always is, is how much is it, right? What does Preston County share? So they haven't calculated exactly how much is distributor bucket, how much is non-distributor. And that changes the percentages. John estimated sixty percent non-distributor on this settlement funds, forty percent distributor. So basically, and at this time, there was three hundred million dollars allocated. Of twenty-four point five percent was going to the counties and cities, which is seventy-three point five million. So Preston County share that should be. Now, this is a rough estimate based upon my calculation, so don't hold me to it if it doesn't come out exactly.
But how would you do it if it come out wrong?
Yeah, exactly. So in December, Preston County should get a check, give or take six hundred eleven thousand seven ninety-two.
That's about what we had figured before when we first talked about this, around a little over six hundred thousand dollars. After, I mean, and there again, that was rough math.
Right.
Going by the percentages they gave us on that big chart that went down to like the ten thousand decimal point, I think.
Exactly.
So it was real.
Can you give me a rough estimate one more time, six hundred and eleven?
Yeah, with the thousandth of a cent, right? Six hundred eleven thousand, seven ninety-two, and sixty-seven cents.
I knew it was just like on and off. And I remember us doing that math, now, God, that was over your deal.
That's right. And now, this would be the first payment. So at this time, the attorney's fees had been reduced to fifteen percent, and the cost came out of the attorney's fees. And so that's already been taken care of. So then, you know, it's all close to a billion dollars. There's some bankruptcies, and we're supposed to get some money from some of the bankruptcies.
So there may be more.
There will be more.
No, there's so, we have some off.
Now, there will be more. Because I think at one point in time, we had figured, we figured, and there again, a rough estimate, a couple of years ago, where it was over eight hundred thousand dollars.
And I think it will be before it's over, probably closer to a billion or more. Part of it depends on how much we get from bankruptcies and so forth.
Yeah, and you never, no, yeah, what they have.
I knew we figured it out, it's like, I think sixty-eight percent.
No, that's right.
Yeah, it is.
Nothing to sign today?
Nothing to sign today.
Just an update.
Well, I wish I could brought the check with me.
Yeah, that would have been great.
Yeah, after seven years of working on this, that would have been nice.
Seven years?
When I started, when Preston hasn't been involved quite seven years.
Yeah.
Barbara County has. But as far as, then the other thing, once you can receive the money, you know, one half of that, you have to pass the resolution, but the one half of it can be used for regional jail bill reimbursement. And other things you spent for the opioid problem reimbursement.
Linda, the communication, I think I saw some stuff that come through that I did forward to your office about the use of different medicines for those guidelines.
As far as opening checking account, that's the sheriff's tax office.
Yeah, that's your tax office.
Did you see anything? I thought, I know it comes in.
Yes, I had already, yeah. Somewhere along the line, I'm getting included in that.
Okay, I thought, so I was wondering.
They should be on the agenda here soon, you don't have to be. Thank you for your ongoing work.
Oh, thanks.
You've been working on this way longer than I've been here.
Well, it was kind of a, you know, it used to be a system prostitute, so I've seen everything that's happened, and it was a labor of love, really. But the other thing is, Preston County not only get the, you know, that other money down there that funded Charleston, a plot for great.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, you and I on that.
Well, how much is there roughly in that that can be applied for?
Well, right now, another two hundred and twenty-six point five million is going into that fund right now. And then more money's coming in every year. So, you know, it's close to, so I guess another, there should be another three or four hundred million going on top of that. So Preston County should get some of that.
Right. We say, yeah, it's going to have to be the first foundation, and it has to be applied for through grants and things like that sort. And that's mostly, probably going to be mostly geared towards treatment or prevention is where they're most focused on.
Yeah, but we could get county partners in on that.
Well, that is, and Hunter, that is actually what they said to do is to partner in a regional fashion because each, each, it's laid out in regions anyway. But to get with the region and say, okay, let's do this within the region so that your chances of getting that grant money are that much higher.
With that kind of money, you could have been up a regional mental behavioral health facility, treatment facility.
Right, and I know Rayoff County is trying to create kind of a region, some of the smaller counties. Whereas Preston County's really the largest county other than Mon.
Other than I can.
Over the world counties, I'll say, the largest county. So it looks like Preston County would be one of the leaders, on however that.
We should be, definitely. Okay, well, thank you so much.
All right, great news. All right, and we need the check, oh, we just go, then I can check it off the box, so.
Okay.
Got it.
Excuse me.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next up, and we're just a couple minutes late, we have Robbie Baylor with the Economic Development Authority. She has a resolution for the West Virginia LED grant and a letter of support for the Build West Virginia.
So the first thing is the LED grant resolution. That is the money that is made available to the Economic Development Authorities throughout the state by the State Development Office and the Legislature every year. This year, they had some extra money, so the LED grant is going to be three one thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars. It is required to have a local match. In the past, the county commission has matched that for a couple of years. We provided our own match, which the state is not real favorable of, but, you know, we have to have a local match or we don't access that money at all. And it is supposed to be a dollar-for-dollar match.
And it was thirty-one eight eighteen?
Thirty-one eight eighteen, yeah. Yeah, and that money is not money that's just given to us. We do have to fill out an application to request it. Those applications are due February twenty-ninth this year.
So this is something you do year after year?
We do every year. It does require, like I said, requires application. There are certain things that we have to do to get this grant. We're required to have so many hours of training. We're required to attend certain conferences. We're required to provide our budget, our strategic plan. I mean, this is not just, they send us a piece of paper to get this money.
How do you calculate that amount? I'm just curious.
Which amount?
The thirty-one ET.
It's set by the legislature.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so right now, the N code, the counties, each county's not allowed to have more than thirty-four thousand dollars. So we're on the top end, but last year, well, the year we're in right now, it was twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So it has gone up a bit from last year. And we just need a resolution. One of the things we do have to do is have a resolution from the county commission stating that we're the lead economic development of the entity.
Yeah, we've done that, yes.
Yeah, so that's why I'm here to request is that you go ahead and sign that resolution and that is provided to you.
At this time, I'm due to approve the Preston County Economic Development Authority's resolution for the local economic development grant, OEDG program, and authorize the President of Preston County Commission to sign.
No, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve and authorize the President to sign the LED grant program for the Preston County Economic Development Authority. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe we need to have it tested.
Need.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right. The second request is for a letter of support for the Preston County Economic Development Authority in Mon Area Partnership, Build West Virginia application, for lack of a better word. They really don't accept applications, they accept requests. I'm not sure how, but even though it's a request, there's a lot of information that they want you to provide. So the Build West Virginia program is something that is new. It was enacted in two thousand twenty-two, and at that time, only three places were eligible. Last year, the legislature expanded it, so anybody in the state is now eligible to participate in that program. However, they're not going to be putting one of those in every single county because that's not yet.
Didn't Roelzberg and Aurora get placed in with Davis or Thomas?
Yeah, Aurora and Roelzberg are in with Davis and Thomas simply because when they put the dot in Davis, it's a twenty mile, twenty air miles from.
I knew there was some kind of radius that they picked, they just picked like a municipality and said, this is it, and it was.
They don't show.
So that's what it does.
Roelzberg didn't tear out, it doesn't show up on their map.
It doesn't, because the only thing they show on their map are those center points. And those center points don't necessarily have to be a municipality. If we wanted to make, for example, like the Arthurdale Center Hall a point, we could do that. If we wanted to make the.
This one is a municipality.
Yeah, that's right, I don't ask them municipality, I didn't speak.
Yeah, Davis is.
It's the center of population, I think is actually what it says.
This one is on the watered prime preserve, it's not a municipality. Would that be the center point?
No, because what we want to do with our center point is pick up the most property that's advantageous to Preston and Mon counties.
Right, I see that.
So we have been playing around with the center points. We don't have one a hundred percent located yet because we're still waiting for some input from Mon County.
Are you talking like Piski maybe?
That's what I was thinking, Piski or something like that.
Actually, we're going to try and get a little southern, further south from that if we can. So far, it depends on how far west Mon County wants to go. If we, for example, if we cited it in Arthurdale, put that dot in Arthurdale, we pick up most of northern and western Preston County. We pick up a good chunk of Mon County. We pick up Grafton, we pick up Fairmont. I mean, that would be advantageous to a lot of places, but it's going to depend on how far west Mon wants to go. So we've played everything from Arthurdale all the way up to another location that picks up more western Mon County is the Lakeview Golf Course. So it just is going to depend on how far west. Because what we don't want to do is, the further north we get that point, the more of Pennsylvania we pick up. And it doesn't really benefit West Virginia.
Yeah, exactly, you want to go, yeah, I have to answer your saying, because you're just overlapping in Pennsylvania and Maryland, you're basically.
Yeah, our largest two growing areas are the Valley District and in Boston. That's exactly what you're trying to encapsulate.
Yeah.
Can you let the public know what exactly the Build West Virginia does?
So the Build West Virginia provides a tax incentive to developers to develop housing in an area. Housing can be main houses, it can be apartments, it can be second homes for, you know, people who want to live here half the year. It cannot be timeshares. It cannot be a house that's used as a business. It cannot be a house over business. It is strictly housing. The idea is not low-income housing. I don't know if that's been tested or not. It is more geared to be workforce housing. Housing for people who are working and need a place to live. And the tax incentive is to help give the developer an incentive to keep the housing prices lower, not to have to recoup as much because they're going to get money from the state.
They're getting tax breaks.
They're getting tax breaks. So that's kind of the overview in a nutshell. It's, there's a really complicated math.
No, I did have one question that kind of confused me when I looked it up. How about the property value adjustable refund tax? What exactly is that?
So that is that complicated math problem. So you have to take the amount they spent on the project, the approved amount on the project, you have to divide it by ten, and then you have to divide it by the median, the median household income or the median housing price, I don't know. There's like this big long formula that gets you to what that amount is.
Would that be an adjustment for the builder?
It is for the builder. To, like I said, it's recouped over ten years, and it's to incentivize to keep the housing cost down and to build the housing. And if you want that math equation, I can get that to you.
No, I'm sure I can. I was just kind of confused about what that meant.
Yeah, so, you know, in addition to the housing, they're trying to, these projects are supposed to promote economic development, they're supposed to promote the use of local businesses to do some of the work. It's not just a hundred percent housing, it's supposed to benefit the whole.
Okay, at this time, I'm due to approve the letter of support for the Build West Virginia application, for the lack of a better term. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve this letter of support for the Build West Virginia application, authorize the President to sign. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, when you say Roelzberg didn't tear out, is everything in between the Davis?
Yeah.
You heard of that too?
Yeah, it all, it's all.
So it would be one big, it would be a circle?
It is one big circle with a twenty mile radius, yeah.
Dee Dee, we have a copy, please, you don't have to make, there's your copy.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
There's currently, there's no hub in Morgantown, like, they don't have, they don't have this, you didn't do that.
No, no, and, you know, we knew Morgantown was working on an application, and we were too. And we know the state's not going to approve too, so it really makes a lot of sense for us to partner on this together.
That's good that you guys think together.
I'm making copies.
He's making a copy of the original. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
In case you have questions, there's an explanation of.
So I think you did a good job of explaining this, this does help.
Good morning. Well, I've been working with Maria, you know, our timekeeping, time sheets at the county uses is something that has been around since a long time. And so there just has to be a more automated way nowadays to track payroll and time sheets and so on. And so I've reached out, there's other counties that have worked with Paycom, and Harrison County might be one of the original ones, and they've been with them several years. And anyway, so I've been looking at this, and I just wanted him to share with you.
Yeah, Paycom's been around for all of its, my god, it's been ten years, so.
Yeah.
So Mario, how much you take in?
Yeah, definitely. And if I start to, um, like, all the time, I mean, this software, I mean, it's a weeds with this a lot, so.
Why, you're.
Just cut me off. But, I mean, I don't want to bore you guys with that much like a PowerPoint slides, but I'll just move that screen of a couple of things I want to highlight.
Okay.
Or really, just kind of give you guys an introduction to Paycom, explain, you know, high-level municipalities, especially in West Virginia, switching over to Paycom, and then just any questions you guys have, and then we can kind of just go from there.
Okay.
But first thing, I mean, as I said, Paycom, we've been around forever. I mean, we don't want to bore you with our company story, but, I mean, we've found way back in nineteen ninety-eight. So we've been doing payroll and HRX.
So you always electronic, or was it not that in ninety-nine straight?
So, no, so actually, we were actually the first cloud-based payroll software. So we actually developed an app before any other company in our space developed that. So, but one of the main reasons why, like, county are switching over, so as you can see, we're moving over to Harrison County. We just brought on Dogger County three weeks ago, was literally at their commissioner meeting. First off, I got to say too, it's actually, I always love companies' commissioner meetings, I feel like I'm running for governor.
And you dress the part.
But it's, it's cool, because I kind of get insights into the county, and like, I know it's like, it's payroll software, it's human capital management, but like, to see the initiatives going on, and see like, how we can actually help out. Because fundamentally, we are payroll software, but as a whole, human capital management system. So that's everything for recruitment to retirement. So what we do, high level, how we're different than every single company in the space, and why those counties that you see on that screen, Harrison County, Dogger County, Brooke County, Hancock County, the city of Morgantown, Parks and Rec, I mean, the city of Whelan, I mean, the list goes on and on. Why they're switching over is because, like Linda was saying, the most dangerous risk in any municipality, any business, is that's why we're always doing it. And for some reason, in government, it takes a while for things to happen. So there is a ton of paper processes. I mean, it is super manual, I mean, when those time sheets are manual, it is twenty-one straight. I mean, as you guys know, I mean, legislations, if they were an employer, employer, to have these manual processes in place, when it is harder than ever to find people to work, it is very, very dangerous. I'm not trying to scare anyone into this or anything, I'm just saying, there's.
Time efficient and cost efficient too.
Another thing is, when it's government, everyone's doing more than just their job. I mean, Linda is doing way more than what she signed up to do, so you need to have something in place. I mean, dog with it, I mean, Crystal just had shoulder surgery.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right.
I can only imagine.
He just had a trouble getting ahold of us, so he knows that's why.
So, and like, that's another thing, it's like, these municipalities, West Virginia especially, they've been around for a line of key person. It's like, God forbid if that person gets hit by a bus or something happens, it's who's going to come in and process the payroll.
Okay, so you guys would be processing payroll and everything along with it, so we'll be out of house, is that what we're doing here?
No, so what it is, the software is service. So Linda's team, they would still be processing the payrolls, but what we're different is our payroll is auto-generated. So I don't know how much you guys would know, like, I don't want to get too in the weeds of this and confuse you guys. But typically what happens when we build like payroll is like, so right now, if you're taking all the manual paper time sheets, and it's all in, in, all into one place, creating these manual data entries, there's about seventy to seventy-five data points that touch one employee.
Not to mention the hours.
Not to mention the hours, correct.
What it takes to do it.
Correct. Where we're different is our payroll is auto-generated. The reason that we can do that is because this is where we're super, super different. We did not partner with, we did not acquire any other companies. So Paycom made all of our software from the ground up, so from timekeeping, benefits, your four-on-k file, to, you know, your applicant tracking, to your onboarding, it's all Paycom. So all of our software is written in the same language, so it can auto-generate everything. Because everything in payroll touches human resources, and everything in human resources touches payroll. So, yeah, go.
I'm sorry, so the, the online time sheet, so they, you have an app so they could get on their smartphone or a computer if they don't have a smartphone, and then they would put in their, their time and their information, and it would automatically put that into your system.
Automatically goes in the payrolls, they can clock in on their phone, they can clock in on a laptop, a desktop, a kiosk. If you want to use us for time clocks, you can use time clocks. And we can even geofence buildings. So hey, an employee can't clock in in the parking lot, they have to clock in within silence, they're building.
So I do have a question, so that the app does not cost our employees anything, it's a free app, it's free.
Yeah. So this is our, this is the big thing, so we have great software, I mean, unbiased, I mean, single database. Of course, it's going to be cool, but it's the strategy behind it, especially in two thousand twenty-three. We want employees to be responsible for that information. So the information they're already giving Linda, they're already giving other elected officials, that comes from onboarding, so we can automate the whole onboarding process. So from I-nines to W-tos, we'll be doing like tax filings, Paycom takes over that liability, get rid of like the human error aspect.
Well, and there again, that's employees, you're firing employees, because now, instead of saying, I gave this information to you, and you didn't process it, now it's, no, you.
Exactly.
Should have been put in yourself, unless you have the capability, so you failed to take care of yourself.
And it still goes through the department head.
Yeah.
The department head still approves.
Well, they still have to approve, but the thing is, it's still on the employee to make sure that they did, they know they want to get paid, or they want to get their vacation, or whatever, on time. It's on, it's on me, I got to go in and make sure I do it, or.
What do the employees care about the most? Their paycheck. And like I said before, this is literally everything that ties that employee's paycheck. And now when they're approving these things, so hey, let's submit a BTR request to an employee, it automatically goes to my manager, and my manager approves it, the county can run the payroll, or maybe one other layer, you know, another workload in there, and it has to go all the way back to Linda then. But now you have a whole electronic auditor. So for any FSLA audits, and the government, the government comes in, they can log into the system, they can pull things out. It's just a very, like, much, you got to go.
And it's very user-friendly?
So that's, that's our, that's other dimension, you already know, like, that's that, so this is other things, so.
Okay, so if we had an turnover in Linda's office, you're saying someone from off the street is getting hired new employee would be able to pick it up fairly quickly?
Well, I understand that they would be on hand to train for a lifetime, for forever.
I'm not sure if it buys the training.
Yeah, so two things. So, first of all, do you guys have iPhones, by chance?
Yeah, I have an iPhone.
No.
You're an, all right, you have a smartphone.
I have a smartphone.
All right, perfectly. So to like really simplify this, the way I like to describe Paycom, it's like the smartphone of payroll attorneys. So if I'm going to sit here and I'm going to tell you, we want employees to be responsible for that information, I mean, have you looked at W-tos, pretty complicated?
Yeah.
Those tax documents, they don't make them look easy for some reason. But the system nannies them through that. It's not going to let them go through to the next page until they go back to that information, because we need employees to be responsible for that information, because they're already giving it to you. Now the system has to guide them through that, and we tie everything back to their check. So we've been sent, so like, the whole, this adds value to your employees. So all a hundred and twenty employees now, they're then getting check previews. So before they get paid, so what they do on Friday is, is hey, I get paid, on the night, it's my direct deposit, or I get a paper check, they're looking at their check. On Tuesday, we're then sending them a check preview before they even get paid. So if there is an error, we can have that fixed before the payroll's even submitted. So, like, another thing, like, for example, like, I'm sure everyone eye drops a call. You know, when I'm going to, the value, this is like the value for like employees, and I was like, hey, I go to the dealership, me for example, we use Paycom, I pay com, we're going to use Paycom, right? So I went, and I went to the car dealership, I picked out a truck that I wanted, I went to the bank, five minutes on the street, they asked me for two pay stubs, I pulled out the loan, I pulled up my app on my phone from Paycom, showed them my last two pay stubs, literally just handed them my phone, all good, got the note, went to the dealership, got my truck. All of them in thirty minutes. That's the value of the employee that they did too. But then on the backend now, we're getting rid of a ton of manual paper processes, and it's creating those efficiencies. So now Linda's department can be more strategic, and they're not, I mean, it takes a long time to process payroll is the way it's currently being done. Like, we, like, for example, we cut down, Brooke County's similar size to you guys, about a hundred and twenty, like, a hundred and thirty employees, by two days, processing payroll.
One more question, so does it integrate into bookkeeping at all?
Yeah, so like GL wise, so that's very important. So like your accounting software, we actually pull out a software all the way down to employee detail, however you guys need it filed, and it'll automatically post those journal entries into your accounting system.
Oh, that's nice.
And you guys use Avenue? Or no, did you guys use Avenue? Avenue, correct. Doggerich County, who was brought in, uses Avenue, Hancock County uses Avenue, I'm pretty sure, I can't remember what county does. But it's very, very common that we see Avenue, but if you ever were to change your accounting software, we actually reroute your GL five, you're free. And then training wise, so implementation wise, it'd be a ten-week implementation. We're going to train, first of all, we're going to collect all the information, so we can actually take over your tax liability, it's our processing payrolls, but we're going to train your supervisors, your managers, all the way down to your employees. And then any trainings after that, free, no charge, like, hey, like, our whole thing's utilization of the system. Compeme, on average, we have ninety-seven percent employee usage. The funny thing is, Harrison County, ninety-seven percent employee usage, so that means this is a change. So this is, I clocked in, I clocked out, I submitted PTO, I submitted an expense, I updated my address, I moved from Morgantown to Halle County County in Pittsburgh, the taxes are insane, I updated that, that's a change. Ninety-seven percent of those changes came from an employee level. So anytime a supervisor or an avenue user has to go in and make a change for an employee, they're making that change on behalf of the employee for their own information.
Well, this, I think I can see a lot of efficiency coming through by way of just that change, because we don't have full-time, like hardcore, like HR department, where they're doing this stuff, and if the employee is able to punch in the information as, you know, the change is happening, I think, and they're trained to do that, I think that'll streamline a lot of things.
Well, I mean, it's it's much more efficient, because I knew, I used to work for the Oregon big system, a week, year, twenty years ago, and we got switched. And if you wanted, if you change, if you change your bank account, you did it.
Yep.
It wasn't bringing the paperwork and I had to send it in, because that's how it used to be.
Yeah.
Send it in, but now, you went to your bank account change, you can do it now.
Exactly.
And when it's done.
Exactly.
And you get confirmation right then on the spot, boom, it's done. Because no offense, I had a guy that says his wife, while he was out of country, was spending all his money and left him, and so he changed his bank account so that she couldn't get any money.
And I mean, that's.
It should happen, it happens, it happens. And he said, I want some money when I get out of here. And she basically told him she was divorced, but she had always access to his accounts, so he changed everything.
Is this only uh employees, or could it be vendors also?
Like, what do you mean?
Like, so this is like a payroll system for us to take care of our employees, but does it, does it?
No.
No, yeah, okay.
It's just, it's just.
Just your employees, so like, everything from, so like, for you guys to package, it's not going to be like something crazy. Like, you guys have a very basic package, it'd be onboarding, it's going to be time attendance, the geo fencing, and then the four oh one K file for your guys' retirement, and it goes to the state. And then something that you could possibly add, well, actually, this is another thing, you have, is personal action forms, with terminations, promotions, demotions.
Yeah, like editable forms or.
Yeah, all the documents, so all of the onboarding documents, anything with, if you guys have like, if you want to send out your employee handbook, and you want your employee to sign up on it, that there was a change made, you can do that now.
Yeah, that's that's great.
So what you're living in now, is you're going to be living in like a notification-driven environment because of the single database. So as things are happening, as employees are submitting PTO, they're making changes, or they're clocking in, they're clocking out, or pay on the employees to clock in at nine o'clock, it's nine fifteen, my supervisor just got an notification, hey, they didn't clock in yet, employee got an notification, you didn't clock in yet. So now, like, say for example, I'm a deputy, I'm supposed to be out protecting community, I'm supposed to be on the clock right now, why am I not on the clock? Their supervisor knows now, hold people accountable, and then, hey, maybe I forgot to clock out, the system's going to notify them that too, it's correct mispunches too. So I'm not saying this is true, but if I'm an employee and there's a paper time sheet, and I showed up at nine fifteen, I was supposed to work at nine o'clock. Me personally, I am a hundred percent put it, I am ninety-nine percent putting that I was I was here at nine o'clock.
I mean, at least you're careful.
Yeah. But like, just think about that, I mean, I'm not saying that this could be true, but like, I know for like Brook County, for example, I mean, there was a pretty significant overspend on their payroll, because those add up. And then not to talk about.
Fifteen minutes here, fifteen minutes there adds up really quickly.
And what's your largest expense? Your salary expense.
Okay, so Mario, hit hit us with it, what's our, what's our price?
Yeah, definitely. So how we charge, so one thing too, we want to earn your business every month, so there is no long-term contract, you can leave Paycom anytime you want, as long as you give us a fair notice. Our KPI, our key performance indicator is utilization of the system. So anytime that's below ninety-seven percent, we're checking in, hey, Linda, you know, you need help with this, you need us to train your employees, you know, what's going on? We need to train the elected officials, you know, what's going on? And then we charge a, there it is. A base fee, so it's per check. So there's a base fee, and then there's a per check fee. So the base fee is a one-time, so it is.
One thousand one seventy-six forty-three, nine thousand.
So that would be like.
No, I think you're going to worry, no, right.
One-time application investment.
This is how much.
Yeah, this is, so this is.
The annual send for checks.
Yeah, so this is for a hundred and twenty employees, there's a base fee of three hundred and one dollars and forty-six cents. That, no, that's one time. One time per payroll, so you're going to be charged twenty-four times a year, because you're semi-monthly. And then a per check fee of seven dollars and fifty-three cents. So this is for a hundred and twenty employees, so if you pay a hundred and twenty employees every single payroll, which chances are you don't, it's going to be per payroll, one thousand two hundred and five dollars and six cents, so for the whole year, we're estimating about twenty, twenty, call it twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine, right.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost. So you guys are protected in the fact of, like, you guys are going to ramp up and down on employees, you're constantly moving. You're never going to be charged for, like, a locked-in, like, fee of like, hey, I have a hundred and twenty employees in payroll, this pay, I have a hundred, a hundred, I'm charged for a hundred a year. And then what we try to do too with the counties is.
Right down here?
Yeah, I could send this to you guys too, like, I need some of you guys, like, nice.
Just have her nice government, just.
So that's what I was going to explain, so what we do for the counties is we don't want to nickel and dime the counties. So what we do is we sharpen the pencil a lot, with the hope that, hey, we do a good job, implementation goes well, you like Paycom, you refer us into businesses with inside of Preston County, and then we'll offer that the same discount too as well. So and then that implementation fee is staying, that's one time, that's for us to do the training. That's it's never the, that's our base implementation fee.
So it's going to cost us twenty-nine, twenty-one, forty-four a year, but the end, on top of that, we have to pay nine thousand one seventy-six forty-three at the beginning for the training.
The first time, yeah.
One time, but.
It's every time after the, we don't have to.
This is, so this is standard, this is our standard implementation fee. This is all based on when we can take over your tax liability, when we can assign an implementation fee. So what I can guarantee you guys is, I'm showing you the maximum amount right now, but as soon as I can lock in a first check date, so like, for example, say that you were to go live right now, start a Q one next year, you have a eighteen-year start, your implementation fee will be reduced.
Okay, so that's a, that's a cap, not a floor.
Yeah, that is, it would never be higher than that, that's saying that, hey, you guys want to, we don't want to do a county implementation, we want to go live with Paycom in three weeks, you're going to pay that nine thousand dollars, because that's a rush implementation, we need to like, speed up through this. But I want to show you the math, it's not going to be that much. Like, say that you guys are like, hey, we want to do this, we want to go live, the second check date in January, you probably look at about five to six thousand dollars, one time.
Um, year-end fees, that's just for the tax limitation, ten ninety-nines for paying the vendors, and, you know, people that are just temporary employees, like the coworkers, stuff like that. And ten ninety-nines, we're going to do.
You guys probably aren't doing, I don't know if you're doing.
Well, we're doing ten ninety-nine.
No, we have to do ten ninety-nine.
But does Paycom do?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're assuming your tax liability now, so that means we are liable for taxes, so then you.
Anytime we're paying anything to anybody, that's something they'll cover. Okay, so when ten ninety-nines do, is that due Linda, January thirtieth? Yeah, then, so you guys.
We would handle that.
Okay.
So that's the other efficiency gain.
That's, yeah, and that's the thing, and that's, that's why that, that one time implementation is higher, because if they would have to process this year's ten ninety-nines, it would jump up.
Yeah.
If we was waiting until January first, okay, we'll just wait to Jan first, and get all trained done, start fresh on branding order, because we're only month halfway, anyway. Then the following year would be that, and then be it.
Yeah, that that implementation fee, one time, you would never pay another fee like that again.
How about overtime, processing and approval?
So like, tell me more, like, what are you asking?
So we typically, if an employee wants to do overtime stuff, it has to be approved, over that, like, how would, how would that system, is there, is there a check built in?
Are you just so happy? No, I'm I'm actually really, I love, actually, working with counties, because they, I'm sorry, first of all, every county is a little bit different, but like, fundamentally, you guys are all pretty much the same, because of the state, obviously, West Virginia.
Yeah, it's very.
Yeah, we have, we have your exact overtime now, like, I know, like, the deputies, they have like a certain overtime, and it's a really manual calculation, we can handle all that.
Okay, um, what's your ask, Linda? I mean, you had them come to the meeting, what?
Well, I just, you know, I I believe it's something that the county needs to move forward with, some type of timekeeping that is not stacks of paper, and, you know. Yeah, I I just want to share with you, you know, you never know when something might happen to your staff. And fortunately, I can dive in there and do the payroll and the bookkeeping if I had to, if I had to.
In in my personal opinion, thirty thousand dollars each year is not that extreme.
And it'll cut back the paperwork, you know, and that would utilize, you know, that staff to to be.
They could do something else.
You know, I've got, I've got some positions here that are, I happen to work overtime, and they shouldn't have to, I should be able to have staff.
I know, is this, so you're saying this should um not save us money, but there should be some cost saving.
Typically, typically, what we see, it is very rare, especially from an environment that you're in right now, with super manual, where this is in cash positive process, I mean, par, like, process, project, project, project. So obviously, it's going to be an added cost at first, because now you're recognizing that expense. But as we're saving money on the timekeeping, as the efficiency gains are coming, reality of hours now, we're we're not focused, your elected officials aren't focused on doing mundane administrative tasks. They're just approving time cards, they're approving, you know.
And just always banging on our door about additional personnel, so this. This would free up, that's what I'm saying, this is time to get rid of that from somebody else.
Correct.
No, it's a trick, Linda, that's exactly what's happening. Now, you said that this person working all these extra hours will pay for their dogs, and they don't handle it.
Well, they're not working, okay.
They're working on some other project, that creates efficiencies, is what I'm saying. I'm not saying, I'm not saying they're not doing anything, well, in that case, fire them, but.
I'm I'm just saying, um, that would allow that payroll clerk to help out, bookkeeper to help out, other departments that need, so.
Okay, so let's let's rule it in here, so we don't take up too much job. So when are you wanting, if, if this is something that we're going to have, but when were you wanting to implement it?
Oh, well, I I can't, you know, it's going to take, so we need to train.
It's a ten-week implementation time, right?
I, no, it's like, ten weeks. For best practices, like, from my standpoint, first of all, it doesn't really matter when you go live. I mean, it's either middle of the quarter, or, like, the two best times to go live are like, middle of the quarter, or like, the start of a brand-new year, or like, the start of your fiscal year. The worst time to go live is like, the week before the start of a new quarter, because then there could be a tax draft, because you're then going to pay your taxes from the way you're currently dealing it, then we're then going to be charging you for the taxes. Obviously, you'll get that money back, but there could be a little cash flow issues. But what I would recommend, because since we are in a new time of year, implementation fee, I know that's, I can see it in your eyes.
There's a couple things that are going on in my eyes right now.
So I saw, what what I can say though, like, since this is end of year, we can do end-of-year implementation fees, so we can reduce that fee, it's a ten-week implementation. Right now, if you wanted to, we could hit your second date in January, or your first check date in February, and that, I can almost guarantee you that implementation fee is going to be reduced significantly right now. Because we have the resources available, because this is our busy time of year, we have the teams available and ready to go for this. So if this is something you seriously are considering and want to do, and that implementation fee is something that I saw you perk up at, this is the best time of year to go ahead and do that.
Do you have a draft agreement versus?
Yeah, so I could send it over like an official proposal.
No, no disrespect whatsoever, but I have in in time past as a commissioner, I have wanted to see something like this implemented, uh, because I did come from another place that had a lot more employees than a hundred and twenty, and I did see the benefits of of a system like this, I worked at PDU and payroll and and HR, and and did something like this, and so I know there are other vendors out there. And I agree with Dawn, can't really put a price on making things efficient and getting current, but this is kind of sticker shock, it probably wasn't for Harris, Harris? It it is for Preston County, um, because your price is across the board, so I I just, I think we have got to, we want to see a contract, I think that we need to see that and see what we're looking at there, um, but I would also like to just see what else about there, um, because I know there is a lot of other payrolls.
And that's, I don't understand.
Yeah.
But this is the right direction, and I appreciate all the support.
Do you have any, um, written in your current budget, if please? I have to ask.
I'm like, I I'm like, just barely keeping my head above water here, I'm already watching my pants, so half a year is moving up.
If you could, I mean, a draft agreement, if you could send a draft agreement, if you're just for us to look at, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I could definitely do that, um, and I I agree with you, I mean, it's a big decision, it impacts every single.
Intentionally, could you judge him by the information you gave us, anything here? Listen to what you said, just set it up, if you can, I mean, hopefully, we'll set up, since it's first one in February.
The first, maybe the fifteenth.
Then we would have a better snapshot of what the implementation costs.
Yeah.
But I mean, and this isn't currently budgeted, so we would have to front the cost, we would have to front the cost, and then budget this as an annual, you know.
For work, but then days.
Thing moving forward.
Yeah, um, I think too, it would be really good for you guys too, like, talk to Harrison County, hurry down the street, I mean, we are a very trusted provider in West Virginia.
How long have you been doing the service for those counties, broadly?
Harrison County, that's been a couple of years, we just brought on Doggerich County three weeks ago. Uh, Hancock County, Brook County, Hancock County was this year, Brook County was last year, uh.
Harrison's been several years.
Harrison's been on the longest.
And how about Wood Park, I have a direct line of communication with them, that is in charge of that system, Wood Park.
I want to say about a year and a half.
Forty-five. Yeah, I'm going to check the Harrison County.
They are the closest, yeah.
They could shed me, it was a cost-neutral thing, at least every time, that would. The thing is, all of them are bad.
Yeah.
I could.
I would not, I listen, I would not be mentioning their names if I didn't think you guys were.
My feels good, it's called Root County.
Yeah. No, just see what their initial, yeah.
I don't know, any other concerns or thoughts, or any other key points that you think are vital for us to know today, Mario?
Um. I, yeah, one, real quick, uh, the one thing, like, how we're different than other companies, and like, why we have a lot of counties in West Virginia on Paycom, and not like a different vendor, is because of the same database. Is because, so like, when you look at it for like, the payroll, each elected official has their own separate process, and own separate roles. So when you factor in these other companies that acquire a timekeeping company, or the department of the timekeeping company, that's the integration on the backend. And it's kind of hard to consolidate those processes and get it back to the payroll, and also, our payroll is auto-generated. So you're starting from a check register preview, and actually building manual data sets. And we focus on the employee, the end user, and we try to make it easy to use and simple for them, because we want that information to initially come from them, because it is their information. And that's how we are able to go ahead and auto-generate those payrolls now, because that main data point is focused on the user, the employee. So then if that's how we create a real software as a service. Not beating up on any companies, they're a great companies, they make trillions, millions, gazillions, but this is software as a service, the last thing I want to do is give you another software that you're not going to get utilization out of, not going to get the ROI out of, and then it's just more digital than it is actually automated. I'm trying, like, literally. I'm trying, like, literally trying to create automation, and the only way we're gonna do that is by focusing on the employee, having a lot of information coming from them, and then creating those payrolls for you guys, for that product. But I could definitely send you guys over, uh, proposal and everything.
Yeah, and you, this, you, you, what?
Yes, send it to me, I got it, yeah, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
One thing I would like to add is, um, just remember one thing, if you ever do decide to run for governor, that it's not really the suit that makes the person, it's the work that goes on inside the suit.
I don't know, but they, the suit definitely does.
You know, it feels like you're coming for dinner.
So what do they?
Get a dog.
Time out, time out. Time out. Do I, do I have Preston County's vote?
Wait, do you live in West Virginia?
We'll have to see how that, uh,
Do you live in West Virginia?
That stuff comes.
They did away with, they did away with the whole, uh, ballot, same ballot in a long time ago, so I can't just tell you, you're gonna vote this way and if you do, you'll get a shot.
I'll dress as I have.
You're like a Pennsylvania.
Yeah.
Don't dress like your senator.
Yeah, no, but seriously, thank you guys so much. And if you seriously feel any questions, my business department or myself, email.
So this isn't a Pennsylvania-based company?
No, we're actually based on local ownership.
I was gonna say, I knew they were.
Didn't look that far.
Yeah, any questions, just shoot me an email, they need one to call. That's all.
Thank you, you did a good job, thank you, very informative, thank you.
Excuse me.
All right, we will move along, PIBs. Let's go ahead, sorry, a minute, approval minutes.
At this time, I'm going to approve the minutes for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
You have an extra one?
Yeah.
They're properly moved and seconded to approve our minutes, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. State settlement, please note that we did have one objection filed, so there is a cross through for a mistake.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to approve the state settlement list for October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, through November third, two thousand twenty-three. For Lipscomb, Moots, and help me out with that last.
Chum chest.
Tommy chest.
Chum chest.
They just sent it off.
That handy, that was waiting, I didn't finish saying.
All right, I didn't think you did, but.
I was seconding.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the estate settlement list for October thirtieth through November third, two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes, PIBs.
At this time, I'll be able to dispense with the reading. Open court of the proceedings vacation except in the record for November second through the eighth.
It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings of the proceedings and vacation and into them into record and open court session for November second through November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes, we have nothing under fiduciary or old business, um, new business owing central garage that brings us to our administrator's report. Hi.
Hello.
May, will you match Mario and everything?
Yeah, well, I would, I would do my best with my prepared remarks here, uh, for Mario and everything. Happy Tuesday. Uh, last Wednesday, the commission held another work session, uh, on our EMS contract, and we were able to work through the entire document. What remains now is to have the entire contract reviewed by legal counsel, which we are in the process of doing as we speak. More to come on this front in the coming weeks. The work in the sheriff's office is continuing with the mailroom, kitchen, and Tanya's office now fully complete. However, there is still electrical work being done in the main panel in Tanya's office with respect to the new fire alarm system, and that should take approximately another two weeks. The facility supervisor and myself will be doing an additional walkthrough today and tomorrow to be better equipped to give you a more comprehensive report next week. For now, progress is moving, but we still need to see if we can move her just a little bit faster. Kevin and I are on it. There are no budget revisions today, but we do have two items of miscellaneous correspondence, which we received yesterday. The first in your packet is a request for a letter of support for Prodigy as they apply for another broadband grant for Preston County. One that will help ensure, excuse me, ensure that all of Preston County is eligible for broadband fiber services. I've emailed a link to the map of the coverage areas to all the commissioners, and I'm happy to do so as well for our friends in the media. Given the deadline for this grant application is Friday, though, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve the letter of support you have in front of you, authorizing the president of the commission to sign. And I would like to thank EDA Director Robbie Baylor for all her help on this letter.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to approve the letter of support for Prodigy's lead six funding application letter, well, letters were already said that, and authorize the president to sign. No, sir.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the letter of support and authorize the president to sign for Prodigy's lead six funding application. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
The final item of miscellaneous correspondence that you all have before you is the list of locations affected by the Mon Power scheduled outage on Monday, November twentieth, scheduled from eight AM to eleven AM. Apart from the sheriff's office, the animal shelter, and OEM nine-one-one. It looks like we are all gonna be without power a bit on Monday morning.
Right.
Uh, I know that President Stone has been diligently working on this issue, and so it is to her that I will now turn for greater advice on how we should proceed here.
Yes, um, after having, uh, some extensive dialogue with, uh, Mon Power, uh, it appears that there's a hotspot that needs corrected, and so they are going to take everything down. They're not anticipating, um, a, a huge amount of time, but in, uh, to just be precautious, because they could get in there and there could be some extreme circumstances. They are suggesting that if we just do not open first thing in the morning to the public, our employees could still work if the elected officials have things for them to do. Um, but it would shut down and stay, remain shut down till noon, that would be a good timeframe and open up at noon. And in the event that something happens, they will notify us and let us know that we would need to close for the remainder of the day, but they're not foreseeing that to be, to be the issue.
So the idea would be that we would be open to the public as a, as a.
As a.
As a, okay, sounds perfect to me. Because, and, and like she's saying, they, they just, they have that three-hour period, because they, they, they anticipate it shouldn't take no more than an hour, but they always wanna.
Sure, sure, sure.
Sometimes.
I think, I think Connie had.
I do, because in the past, uh, power outages have played havoc with our server systems.
Yes.
With our, uh, uh, connections or, or internet connections, we cannot do business without that.
Sure.
So I don't know if we're gonna be able to be out of power outage and backup and running.
You're saying it's gonna affect your servers, like, in emergency power?
Well, they, uh, their initial request came through and they said eight to eleven.
Okay.
And so they are anticipating much quicker than that, it's small.
And what she's concerned about, our servers, when you have a power outage, we don't have, I would say we don't have the right equipment, but we should add better equipment to protect your servers.
We, it, it's an item of discussion at the top of our IT meeting on Thursday, sort of stuff to, to, you know.
Is there anything we can do to prevent, is there anything we can do to prevent any slight issue with, just like, just shutting everything down?
Connie's already read my mind. Uh.
That absolutely will be part of the discussion.
Before the power goes off.
Yeah.
And I've already said. In most cases, that's all you have to do, you just have to.
I've already sent an email to everyone to have them give me a walkthrough for everything on Thursday.
Just have our computers down, we're not gonna be getting there.
Right, we're not.
Well, there, here's the thing, there's always things you can do that don't require computers, not everything in life requires a computer.
Right, for some.
The thing is, with a week's notice, you should be able to figure out what you can do for that three-hour period to do some work to get something fish, done.
The three-hour period is not the issue. We can work for three hours, days with our electronics.
Correct.
So electricity.
It's not serve the public, no.
That, and that's the thing, and she's already said.
That's why you will not be open to the public until.
Okay, we're, we're getting really passionate here, um.
I mean, we've already said you're not going to be open to the public until.
I understand, I understand your issue when the public comes and your computer's not working, so you don't have any of your data, or work on that job.
We can't really expect employees to come in here in the dark without electricity and just sit around and, and do things. That is not the expectation, however, if it's employees at the animal shelter, there could be, if the weather permits, they could be doing different things where, like,
The animal shelter.
Don't make a difference.
Yeah, the animal shelter.
It's not gonna affect your deputies, because they can be out in their cars doing the, there's, we need to just go case by case, each elected official is.
You should, with a week's.
Our buildings will be shut down to the public from eight to noon.
My point is, I have worked without power in a building when I knew I wasn't going to have power. I made allowances for it, I knew what I could do and what I couldn't do. And we know we can't be open to the public, because how can you look up a record if you can't get the computer to work correct?
I'm just saying that.
But there's, like you said, you have plenty of stuff to do that doesn't require electricity.
If there's an issue like that, we will take the proper measures to notify the public and update our signs when our buildings have.
We'll, we'll, we'll have a full, we'll have a full strategy session, Connie on Thursday, sort of stuff, but we'll be out, different scenarios, sort of stuff for all offices.
We will make sure that all that communicated. If we would have to shut down longer, we will have to, so the public in that notification just needs to know that this is the anticipated opening time, and if that changes, they'll be notified.
That will be notification, correct.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And that's included in our report, thank you.
Perfect, all right, we can go ahead and move along with, um, our miscellaneous course comments. Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner's comments. Sure, I got a few things here. Uh, I have a farmland protection meeting tonight, I'm super excited about, uh, this meeting, because it's going to be highlighting farmland protection, it's coming up on its twenty-year, uh, and they're doing some really great things, uh, down there to, uh, celebrate that. Um, farmland protection, if you don't know, was created, uh, June twenty-second, two thousand four by the Preston County Commission. Um, and it really, um, just does a lot to help preserve, uh, the, the farms in the county. Um, and it's just moving in a, a great direction, so I do have.
Can you do, Paul, can you just?
There are, yes, there are some applications on coming down. So it's, uh, as the funding comes in, they can just continue to, to work on them.
The meeting has really taken off.
She does really good with that. Um, EDA executive meeting, uh, on Wednesday for the executive board, um, this, this is as well, uh, just like the highlight, uh, the Veterans Day celebration that happened here on Saturday and the, the additional dedication of the, the new bricks. Um, there was a great turnout here on Saturday to show support for our veterans, uh, past and present. And then, just want to point out, and I, I was able to see some of it firsthand, um, a, a special thank you to all the fire departments that responded to the brush fire that started on shower bath and went up over towards the animal shelter. Um, that could have been very detrimental to a lot of places up there, had it not gotten under control. Um, and that was just a, a very scary, uh.
When was that?
It was Fri- no, Thursday, there was no school on Friday, right? Yes, so it was Thursday morning, um, very, very scary. And at first I didn't realize someone had sent a picture very early in the morning, and I was like, what is that? And then I realized it was the fire, I was like, oh my gosh. Um, but I did, when I had come to town on Thursday in a school bus that morning, I did see, like, the departments just, you know.
There's not.
From one area to the next, this was, of course, daylight hours, but I'm just so thankful that they were able to get that under control. Um, and then, another thing, but it slipped my mind, maybe it'll come back, go ahead.
How are your opinions?
Why, Nick?
Um, as Nick said, IT meeting Thursday, we worked on the, um, power outage issue. Um, as, um, Commissioner Stern said, all three commissioners and our county administrator Nate attended the Veterans Day ceremony that the, um, Preston County Honor Guard put on. That's the best attendance I've seen since I've, um, been attending. That was great, and then the Daughters of the American Revolution, which Linda is a part of, um, had coffee, free coffee and free donuts, and that was great, so thank you, Linda. And then just one last thing, so last week I sent out the, um, the draft fringe benefits policy or employee benefits policy, if you guys could take a look at that, because I'm gonna, maybe go back here.
Thank you, Tom. Don?
Just a couple things, thanks for mentioning the power outage thing, I was gonna mention that, no one else. But, uh, just quick note. I will reiterate, just kinda echoing Commissioner Thomas's statement, it was part of the best-attended Veterans Day, um, ceremony that they've done for several years over here.
Beautiful weather, it's nice, cool.
They did a, they did a great job.
No, would it, would it like more people in my age group to attend, you know, younger generation?
Yes.
I know, it's unfortunate.
Tonight, um, and I, I just, just came down from, uh, the West Virginia, uh, County Commissioner's Association, the Joint Committee on Volunteer Fire Departments and Emergency Medical Services will be meeting here over there. It is an online thing, so if somebody wants to watch it, um, they can watch the meeting. And, uh, they're going to actually be doing a discussion, uh, Joey Radcliffe, Director of OEMS is gonna be doing a presentation to, on a possible funding, proposed funding formula for EMSs. And it's from four, opinions of four o'clock, they've got it scheduled from four to five, but it may get to five thirty, but it's in. If anybody wants that link, just let me know, I can forward it to them. But that's the big thing, it's coming up, um. Really, that's it.
Okay, Linda, do you have anything else? There's one other thing that I'm gonna just, I'm gonna write it down, I've got a lot of notes from today, oh my gosh. All right, that, then we will adjourn, thank you.
What time is your IT meeting Thursday?
Um, ten, ten o'clock, yeah.
Ten?
Yeah.
Here in this?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah.
No, I didn't have to mention.
Can certainly send an email about that. That we have a monthly IT meeting.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know that.
Since we're in that, it's usually, like, usually, I'm, it's an attorney meeting, so I'm the only one that.
Um, can you give a copy of the, of what's at the table?
He can take a lot of stuff.
Oh, you need it in, uh.
I, I think I've already, uh, actually, I can open it.
And, uh, hopefully, I'll settle.
You already have one, right?
I think I have some, so I could give you this.
And the, the, uh, the, uh.
The, the OPM has stuff in there, so.